Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. You will please join me. We'll stand and have our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, and especially for our city, our state, and our country. We ask for a portion of your wisdom as we deliberate the issues that affect our citizens. Please be with our military members as they serve in foreign language lands and in harms way. Also, we extend a special blessing tonight to our allies in Japan for the hardships that they go through. And we say this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Looks like we -- I didn't see Nancy Chatlett join us, so we're going to change the agenda slightly, going from certificates of appreciation to inviting Senator Miller to speak to us.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hunt, members of City Council. I appreciate you all allowing me to speak for just a moment. First, let me say that I am very excited about the possibility of getting to work with Delegate Gordon Helsel. I know you all will miss him, but I think he's going to do great things in the House of Delegates, and I look forward to forming a strong partnership with him as we move forward in the General Assembly. I want to just take a couple of minutes and report back to you on some of the major issues that came out of this year's General Assembly session. First, the budget. We passed a budget that starts to restore some of the cuts that we have been forced to make over the past three years. We have funded priorities of core services of government, education, mental health, and public safety. We added $75 million to K-12 education. Pecosin schools will now receive about $210,000 more than they would have gotten out of the governor's budget. I know it's not enough, and I wish it could be more. In fact, the Senate budget added $100 million to K-12, but the final conference committee report settled on a figure of 75 billion. We were able to provide funding for the hold harmless provisions, which will also help Pecosin when we made changes in the local composite index. And I sponsored a budget amendment that provides $350,000 in matching funds for the Virginia Space Grant Consortium. That is a partnership with NASA Langley, and it brings high school students from across the Commonwealth and some from Pecosin to NASA Langley during the summer to work on space issues. We added nearly $100 million to higher education, including $3 million for workforce development training. More than $15 million was added for public safety, partially restoring some of the 599 funds and giving additional funds to sheriffs. Now, you have all heard that we're going to spend some $4 billion on transportation projects, some on the peninsula, $4 billion across the Commonwealth. We will be using debt to do that, but it will jump-start some of the projects in our area. We have also set aside $30 million in a special trust fund to deal with the issues that the Department of Justice identified for us in some of our training centers around the Commonwealth. We also funded more than 500 intellectual disability and developmental disability waivers. Other major items that we dealt with, well, one we didn't. We did not consider a plan to sell the ABC stores, so things are the way they were there. And I regret that we did not pass legislation creating a bipartisan redistricting commission. We did pass legislation that directly benefits Pecosin. I want to thank City Manager Wheeler, who came to Richmond twice to testify on behalf of legislation that you all supported to allow Pecosin to tax land and improvements separately. We passed legislation to mandate insurance coverage for autistic children between the ages of two and six with an annual cap of $35,000. That mandate does not apply to small businesses, but with one out of every 100 children being diagnosed with autism in Virginia, we needed to do something for both the children and the parents. In an effort to try and combat the growing problem of childhood obesity, we will require schools to provide 150 minutes a week of physical education for students in grades K through eight. The schools will have three years to figure out how best to do that. Other items included banning synthetic marijuana called Spice. We did not change any laws, although we were asked to regarding localities' ability to regulate fireworks, so that remains the same. And we passed legislation to set up special judicial procedures for veterans and active military to allow for treatment rather than incarceration if they have entered the judicial system because of post-traumatic stress disorder or other combat-related symptoms. And here's one I know you are all interested in. We have asked the Commission on Local Government to assist a task force that's being appointed by the governor to review state mandates imposed on localities, and they will recommend either temporary or permanent repeal of those mandates. And now, we also allow localities to establish annual income or financial worth limitations as a condition of property tax relief for the elderly and the totally disabled. That's a quick overview of some of the major items affecting Pecosin and localities around the Commonwealth, and I did want to come back and report to you, and I look forward to working with you all in the days ahead. Thank you very much.
Senator Miller, thank you for coming. Let me say, based on what we have just heard here, y'all have had a very successful legislative session. It appears that you've heard the cry of the local governments, and the bottom line is you're trying to pass that power back down to the local governments. We appreciate that. We understand and we agree that the best government is that that's close to the people. We appreciate the help on our own ordinance, and Buddy, I thank you for bringing that forward for consideration. I thank you for sponsoring and helping that through the House. But bottom line is, you're a friend of Pecosin. We appreciate your time, and we appreciate just the fact that you've come here to speak to us tonight shows what a great leader you are for us. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Text on special presentations, Mr. John McElroy, Vice President of the CASA Board of Directors. And correct me if I'm wrong, but that's Court-appointed Special Advocates.
That's correct.
Okay.
And thank you very much, Vice Mayor Hunt, for allowing us to speak this evening and for the rest of the council who we've met, and we appreciate your time as well. Well, good evening. My name is John McElroy. As you just mentioned, I live in Williamsburg. I'm speaking to you tonight as the Vice President of the Board of CASA, Colonial CASA, which, as you indicated, stands for the Court-appointed Special Advocates. And our mission is to recruit and train volunteers who advocate for the best interests of abused and neglected children in the juvenile court system at the request of the judge. Before there was a CASA program in Pecosin and in York County, abused and neglected children did not have a voice specifically representing them in their best interest in the court system. And these children really are in the court system through no fault of their own. In fact, 73% of the children that we represent or provide a voice to are below the age of 11. And they are really the most helpless of victims because they really can't speak for themselves. We began our advocacy for these children in York County, Pecosin, in 2008 at the request of Judge Atlee, who now assigns all abused and neglected cases in his court system to CASA. In 2010, CASA served 31 children in Judge Atlee's court, but we project this number of citizens, children-citizens, will grow to 40 in 2011. Now, we train these advocates, our volunteer advocates, to serve as the ear and the voice for the terrible circumstances these abused and neglected children are going through. These advocates thoroughly investigate the family situation from the child's viewpoint, and that's the key. And while working with each child, the advocate prepares a written summary of the case and makes recommendations regarding the well-being and safety of the child to Judge Atlee so that he can make an informed decision on how to and where to place that child in a safe and permanent home. Now, we currently have 45 advocates, five of whom live right here in York County, Pecosin. All of the advocates receive 42 hours of initial training with additional training on a yearly basis to make sure that they're keeping current. And all are dedicated volunteers providing a voice for the children at the request of the judge. The effects of child abuse on children can be devastating. It can lead to depression, social difficulties, teen pregnancy, low academic achievement, drug use, juvenile delinquency, abusive behavior. The list goes on. All of these put additional strain and cost on society and the local government. It costs approximately $1,200 per child per year for CASA to serve an individual child. But the positive impact our advocates have on these children results in long-term savings for the local community and a more positive future for these children. Early intervention and focus on preventing further abuse and neglect can foster resilience in a child and minimize the effects and abuse of abuse and neglect. Now, CASA is governed by a volunteer board of 12 directors. Three of our directors are, two of them are sitting here right now, Sid Insley and Nancy Kane, and another director from this area is Melanie Beal. Now, we have a small paid staff, actually, two and a half, three and a half people. Two of the staff who are paid train the advocates, receive the requests from the judge, assign the cases, support and advise the advocates as they're going through their investigation, review all the case documentation and recommendations, and continue to follow those cases as they continue on in the courts. And we have an executive director who manages the overall operation and is responsible for fundraising. Now, CASA's budget is $230,000 this year. We receive 20% from the state, 10% from grants from several organizations, 10% from city and county governments, and 60% from donations by individuals and other various local organizations, service organizations like the Kiwanis and the like. Now, currently, we receive no funds from Pecosin, but we've only been in the county and the city for a little while, and we receive a small amount from York County. Our hope is that Pecosin can assist CASA with some funding based on the short and long-term savings that our involvement can achieve as we provide a voice for these abused and neglected children. And we are at a point where, as time goes on, we will have more and more difficulty supporting the number of children that are continuing to grow without some additional assistance. So we would like to also offer an invitation to all of the citizens of Pecosin. One is to spread the word thoroughly and throughout the city about the critical assistance we provide to abused and neglected children. This is something each member of the council can do and each citizen in the city. The other thing is consider becoming an advocate. All of our advocates are volunteers. They come from all walks of life, all types of backgrounds, and they are dedicated to working and providing that voice for the abused and neglected children. You really can make a difference if you're an advocate. And finally, donate to our organization, both the city of Pecosin, hopefully, as well as individuals who are living in Pecosin. And to donate, we have a website. It's called www.colonialcasa.org, and you can find out more information about us as well as you can donate online. So thank you very much for your attention and future involvement, and remember, when abused and neglected children can't speak for themselves, CASA can and will. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And finally, under our special presentations is a summary of the work session. Dave?
During the City Council work session tonight, Vaughn Renner with VHB Landmark presented a land use study for Big Woods with connectivity to the With Creek Road and Victory Boulevard retail corridor. Previously, Landmark Design Group prepared and submitted the 2004 Big Woods and Mesic Point Development Studies commissioned by the Pecosin Economic Development Authority. The work session presentation contained four core elements, which I will briefly summarize for you now. The market update, which accompanied the study, cited several updates from the previous study performed in 2004. The study revealed that the population is older and more affluent. Pecosin household income is 50% higher than Hampton Roads' average. The market area of Pecosin household median income is 36% higher than the Hampton Roads' Additionally, and rather compelling, the unmet market area for Pecosin demand increased from $315 million to $461 million since 2004. Additionally, the study showed the city can anticipate future office demand from government and contractors. And finally, Pecosin's location is ideal to attract office tenants. Using the city's comprehensive plan as a guide and utilizing input from informational sessions scheduled for public participation in the city, the following primary goal statement was developed. Pecosin supports economic improvement in accordance with the Guiding Principles for Economic Development in order to increase non-residential tax revenue, support existing businesses, attract new businesses, and maintain its high quality of life. The concept plan included review and recommendations for the commercial areas of With Creek Road, Victory Boulevard Corridor, City Hall and Big Woods area, and addresses the need to make these areas pedestrian-friendly. Finally, VHB prepared an implementation strategy which addresses economic development's role in the plan, infrastructure investment, a timetable for implementation strategy, and also alternatives for the plan. At the March 28 City Council meeting, staff will present the proposed Economic Development Strategic Plan for City Council's consideration. The proposed plan will engage the core elements of the land use study and provide a recommended action plan for their achievement. Thank you for the opportunity to provide the summary, and I'll be very pleased to answer any questions.
Anybody from council have any questions? Thank you, Dave. Okay. We've reached that point in the meeting where we're opening the audience for visitors. Any citizen or person that would like to speak to us about any subject, now is the time to do so. Anybody? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. First item under new business is consideration of the process for the appointment of the mayor. I'm sorry. Approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes of the regular session of February 28, 2011.
I'll second that.
Comments? Concerns? Matt G, you can call the roll, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 6 to 0.
Okay. And now, we'll go forward with new business. First item under new business is consideration of the process for the appointment of the mayor and appointment of the mayor. Mr. Randy, is there anything to, a consideration to discuss?
I worded it that way simply because we don't have an established policy. I didn't know whether council wanted to actually talk about a policy or whether they were already prepared to make motions. I just made sure the agenda covered both possibilities, depending on how you wanted to proceed.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion or move that we adopt a resolution electing the mayor of the city of Pecosin with the name of W. Eugene Hunt Jr. inserted.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor. Or Mr. Vice Mayor.
Just a little premature.
I am just confused as hell. Any discussion on that? Okay. G.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Hunt.
I'll abstain.
Mr. Vice Mayor or Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 5 to 0 with one abstention.
And now, congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. And all, I really appreciate, I really do appreciate the support, especially from the council. We've got a lot to go through in the coming years. We're looking forward to doing that with y'all in, at least until November, when the next general election will be. As Senator spoke earlier about Gordon's time in Richmond, we're looking forward to him being there, and for us to backfill that to the best of our abilities. And again, I just appreciate your backing in doing so. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, is now the time that I could make a motion to consider appointment of the vice mayor?
Absolutely.
Adding that to the agenda? Then someone?
There are second?
Second.
Okay. So we've added to the agenda the appointment of the vice mayor. Is there anybody with a motion to appoint someone?
Mr. Mayor?
I'd suggest that you vote on the motion first to add it to the agenda.
Right. Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 6 to 0.
And now, is there someone prepared to make a motion for the vice mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I propose a resolution electing the vice mayor of the city of Pecosin with the name of Kerry Freeman inserted.
Is there a second?
Second. Is that Freeman? Councilman Freeman?
Yes.
Any discussion? Certainly.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Abstain.
Councilman Freeman.
I'll abstain also.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 4 to 0 with two abstentions.
Mr. Mayor, in conjunction with that, I would like to move that we add a further item to the agenda, and that would be to make a resolution appointing someone to the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. Their meeting will be very soon. Is there a second on that?
Second. As for clarification, was that also for the TPO also?
Yeah.
Councilman Green. Was that also for the, for the TPO as well?
Yes.
Agree with that? All right, so we have a motion made and seconded that we appoint somebody to HRPDC and TPO boards.
That we add it to the agenda.
That we add it to the agenda. Correct.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 6 to 0.
Okay. And with that said, do we have a motion to insert a name?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making an appointment to the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission with mayor, with mayor's name inserted, W. Eugene Hunt Jr., and the primary member to the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization will be the same name also.
I'll second both of those.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? None?
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 6 to 0.
Okay. And the next item under new business is a resolution making an appointment to the school board. My understanding is that we're discussing a delay of this by one week or by two weeks till the next council meeting.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I move that we postpone the appointment to the school board until our next regular scheduled meeting so that we can have time to talk.
Second. Any discussion? Comments? Concerns? Okay.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 6 to 0.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next discussion under new business is an ordinance making additional transfers for fiscal year 2011.
Mr. Mayor, this is an item that is a carryover from your last meeting. We discussed whether or not it would be appropriate to move forward to purchase some used leaf loader equipment. Council members asked we put this appropriation on for discussion this evening. This would transfer $20,000, $12,000, excuse me, from the current contingency reserve within the general fund to the capital fund for the purchases of this equipment. And we went over this at length, but we can go over it again if you'd like.
I don't have any desire to go over it again. Any thoughts from council? Now, the one thing I'll say is you said from the contingency plan within the existing budget, not the unappropriate fund balance.
That's correct, sir. In the budget, we have a relatively small amount of money for contingencies that just sort of crop up during the year. At approximately three-quarters of the way through the year, we have $25,495 in that fund.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional transfers from fiscal year 2010 to 2011.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Questions? Concerns? Comments?
I'm going to vote for it if Mr. Jones wants it because they're a very hard-working group down there, and I certainly support him. However, I would feel much more comfortable about this particular thing had it come from Public Works to us as a request rather than us more or less downward-directing it. And I'm going to vote for it, but I did want to bring that part up.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. G.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 6 to 0.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next item on it is an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2011. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, there are two components to this request. The first is a request from the Pecosin Volunteer Fire Department for an appropriation to make them whole for their donation level. That was a discussion that was had with them as we went into revenue recovery, and though I would, and I certainly support this request, but I would make two points. First of all, many organizations are seeing a funding drop in this time, and we're unable to discern the specific rationale for the $9,400 drop. But one thing I wanted to say is, while they are asking us for this appropriation, they are already in this year making real contributions back to Company 2 specifically in an amount more than twice this of improvements to the facility. So as they've asked for this, they have also made significant reinvestments in the company, in the firehouse that we share. That's the first. The second item, council members are aware that we have been trying to utilize grant funds and also utilize used vehicles for police, and we've been pretty successful with that, actually. But we've had a run of bad luck lately. We lost two police cars, and with the ones that we already had in the pipeline, in terms of replacement, we're asking you to consider using from your general fund balance an amount of $31,000 to purchase one of the two cars, and we will see whether or not we can make it with that. It's our, it's our hope that we can because of the other vehicles that are coming online. But I think we need to augment the used vehicles that we're buying with the occasional new vehicle lest we constantly sort of be in this perpetual maintenance problem. I would ask your consideration of that.
Okay. The chief is here if you'd like to speak to him. Anybody have any questions of the chief? Okay. Hearing none, there might be a motion to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, we make a motion that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2010 through 2011.
Second. Okay. Hearing a motion and seconded, any questions, comments, or concerns? The biggest thing that I'd like to say is, Randy, I agree with you. The, the fire department funding was a commitment of the council, and we did commit to them that when we went to revenue recovery that we would continue to make them whole. But as you said, it's a tremendous pleasure for them to aid us at more than twice that amount in buying city equipment. So it's kind of a win-win, and we just appreciate what they're doing. Cliff, from your perspective, working with old police cars all the time, I'm thrilled. I'm kind of surprised you didn't ask for two to replace two, but we appreciate that, and I certainly will support this. Okay?
Can we...
Can we, at the next council meeting, get figures from the finance on the cost recovery that we've gotten from insurances for EMS services up to this point?
We can probably do it through the end of February.
That'd be great.
Sure. Absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Any other questions or comments? Not? Judy?
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Creaker?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. The next item under new business is the 2012 Capital Improvements Program Considerations.
Mr. Mayor, there are two components to this as well, and if I could, I'll do them in reverse order. The council may recall that last year, approximately this time, you approved that version of the capital improvements plan. And there were two first-year projects, specifically a replacement of a bus and a phase of the Public Works compound overhaul and replacement, that you asked that we recommended and you accepted, the idea that we would wait nine months and get into the fiscal year and decide what our finances were before we took on new debt or paid cash for those expenses. When we now come forward to that time, what I would suggest, and Lieutenant and I have talked about this a couple of times, is that given what's going on with the school budget and all the difficulties that they're working through, that we hold off on the discussion of the bus. But if that's all right with you all, until after their budget deliberations are over. And that we focus tonight on the Public Works compound. Bob, who's coming forward, and Tom, and Tom, Jones and Patty respectively, and others have been hard at work at this. And I've asked Bob to explain sort of the total vision, what the project was that was in the CIP, and the alternative that we have, which advances the ball sort of to the bare minimum, but is still advancing the ball. Bob?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight we're asking for your consideration on the proposed improvements of the Public Works compound, specifically the repair and replacement of the Public Works equipment shed, to that photo, and the tool room. As you know, this building in question is severely damaged and desperately in need of attention. In the past, it has been suggested that the entire complex be relocated somewhere else in the city. I think that led to part of the degradation of the buildings. But unfortunately, that option has never come about because there probably isn't any place else to put it at a reasonable cost. An overall plan has been developed to address the needs of the complex. And I say of the complex, that's all the departments that share that complex, and some that aren't there now, including city hall storage, and maybe augmenting some parks and rec type things. Included in the conceptual plan are the proposed changes that will be required to meet the upcoming regulations having to do with stormwater discharge and the elimination or reconfiguration of our chemical storage building. The initial amount of the request in the CIP was for Phase One, which was to replace that portion of the compound to include the equipment storage building, as well as the other public works storage facilities, with a 140 by 50-foot building. That's the long building on the top center, left center. This building would include secure, conditioned space for general city storage and facilities for storage of the sand and salt spreading equipment also. The estimated cost is approximately $595,000. Debt service could be obtained for this part of the project and would be approximately $50,000 a year. Another option, staff has researched, is a breakdown of Phase One of the overall plan into smaller parts. For example, Phase One, Step One. This plan would include replacing the equipment storage building, along with replacing the current storage area with a 50 by 100-foot building, to include four open bays and an enclosed area for the chemical storage and other equipment. This building would be expandable, and it fits within the conceptual plan of the overall building and other municipal improvements. The structure would not be totally complete, but the city would have full use of the building. Depending on funding items such as overhead doors, additional electrical equipment, plumbing, and concrete flooring would have to be added at a later date. There's not concrete flooring in it now. There would be concrete flooring in just a storage part of it. The estimated cost of this part of the project broke down like that is approximately $125,000, and could be funded with a portion of the unrestricted fund balance. Staff has researched the possibility of repairing the existing structures, and had a structural engineer evaluate the existing buildings. Estimated repairs of the most severely damaged part was approximately $80,000, and would only be expected to last a brief time, and it would not meet the needs for the chemical storage or the additional indoor storage. Therefore, staff does not really recommend that part of the plan. Mr. Beach has worked that plan extensively with us. He's here also, and Tom Jones is here. If you have additional questions, we can help you with that.
Any questions?
I do.
Okay.
How many? You said you could finance it for $50,000 a year. For how many years? I didn't hear you.
Twenty years.
Twenty year?
Twenty years.
Okay, my next question is that this says that we have 813 plus $125,000 in the excess unrestricted fund balance. And go ahead.
I just wanted to, I don't mean to break your train of thought, but you have to subtract from that the amount that you just approved in the previous action.
Forty thousand.
Okay, that was what?
Give or take.
Forty thousand.
About forty thousand. Give or take a dollar.
We just spent the forty thousand on the police cruiser.
Right, okay.
On your part of the public.
Okay, but still, that's way in excess of the initial, what is it, $600,000 roughly?
Yes, sir.
So why don't we just buy this thing? This is something that's been needed long before I was on council. And every year, it keeps coming up, and we keep pushing it away.
I agree, Kerry. What do you, the action here tonight is, you're looking for a consensus of council or consideration? Because there's nothing in the package as far as approval.
I don't see, I don't want to see us doing Step One, Step Two, Step Three of Phase One. I think we ought to do the entire Phase One at one time. Now, however we do it with the unappropriated fund balance, or twenty-year payment, $50,000 a year, I'm fine either way. But, you know, I'm afraid we do Step One, it's gonna, you know, Step Two and Three are gonna be forgotten down the road.
We have a proven record of that.
I know. That's what I'm saying.
House School Auditoriums we could bring up.
That's what I'm saying. You know, let's do Phase One completely, if we're gonna do anything.
So that's the $595,000.
Right.
Well, before we move too far forward on that, I'd like to hear Randy's interpretation of what would be better, do it in two pieces or one piece. I mean, one piece seems to make sense to me, but he works the city's business, and he's closer to it. What's your opinion, Randy?
I certainly believe that the approximately $600,000 project that we put forward, and I recommended in an ultimate you improve for the inclusion of the CIP, is the right way to go as a first step. Bringing this option forward is a recognition of the financial times we find ourselves in, and the restrictions that we have on our total debt capacity and just the ongoing financial commitment. We developed the alternative at around $125,000 as a way to structurally shore up the building and do what we needed to do to meet OSHA and other requirements, knowing that it was certainly not everything we wanted to do. If you're asking me which of the two I prefer, I certainly prefer the whole project. And you certainly have the option of cash funding it rather than debt funding it, as Mr. Creaker I think brought out, or Mr. Freeman. Either one would work. I think you have to put in your own mind what are the other potential reasons you might need that fund balance for as we work our way through this budget and look at the uncertainty in fiscal years 12 and 13. And if the council thinks that expenditure of cash for this project is the best way to use it, then I certainly have no objection at all, and I certainly support the project.
So that is in addition to our 15% that we hold for emergencies and things. That's over and above that 15%.
Yes. You're talking about, originally, there was a discussion of $917,000 above the 15%.
Right.
I would tell you that it's awfully hard in my mind to put down a marker for paying cash for $595,000 for a facility that's meant to go over time. Yes, you could do that, but that is essentially getting you pretty close to a single decision where 917 gives you a couple of ways you could go. And this is all discussing prior to the $40,000 off. Though I agree that they need the entire facility, I don't think we're in a position right now to sign up to that amount of debt, nor do I think it's a good suggestion right now to take 595 out of the 917, as I don't see the economic climate basically changing over the next year to five years. Let's just put it in a range. So to spend all of that money on a single project raises my concern level quite a bit. What I would suggest that we do instead, and obviously, this is up for consensus here, because I don't see anything to move forward with, is that we continue this discussion as we discuss the budget, and that we discuss it in a way that's laid out in a couple of different fashions. One is, if we did it all, financed it all, what's the effect on the tax rate as you bring us the budget? If we went forward with Step One, and two years later did, or five years later did Step Two, what's the net difference in the facility in terms of cost? Is it 595? Is it 615? Or is building moving actually the other way, and it may be, as you bid it, maybe less? Because I know that the economic times are hard on all.
Then wouldn't it make it better to say, yes, we all want to do this, but let's hold this until we have our budget discussions?
Well, that's what was said last year and the year before. That's why I'm pushing this thing.
Can we put this on the agenda right now for a specific meeting so that it does in fact come up?
It's on for the 28th of March, with an ordinance and changes to the proposed 2012 Capital Improvement Plan. So we'll see it then.
No, we don't have our budget, but I think that we will have the ability to make some projections as far as.
Well, I don't disagree.
I'd like to see some options. We still know we're gonna have a shortfall in schools. Even though Senator Miller said we're gonna get another $200,000, that leaves them $700,000 short instead of $900,000. So that's gonna be staring us in the face. I'd like to see some options as to if we put a certain amount down, let's say the $125,000 that we all seem to be happy with for the first step, use that as, let's say, a down payment and finance the rest of it. Because I agree with Gene, I don't think you want to pay cash for something that's supposed to last for 20 years. So, you know, it would make a little bit more sense to me to have a down payment, reduce the amount of the debt, and then finance the rest for the 20 years. So I'd like to see some choices of what that would do, and maybe that'd be a little bit.
Any disagreement?
I think you know here in Pecosin, what's, it's supposed to last 20 years, it's gonna last 40.
Right.
Exactly.
At least. And Phase One or Phase Two don't ever give.
Use it for the extra 20 years. Doesn't last that long.
And that's, you know, I don't have a problem with that concept. Personally, if we've got the money, and in this case, we do, I'd rather just pay for it and get it done. But that's just the way I am. So, you know, financing, it's not a bad option. But I would like to just do the whole thing, because.
You're never gonna see Step Two and Step Three.
Absolutely not.
Okay. Let's leave consensus. Bring back the options, from what I'm hearing.
I think we ought to hear, at least hear the options on the 28th, okay? And then you have a better feel for what a school budget might look like. Because we don't want to go into the hole. If we don't get enough from the state to support, if we still have $700,000 we need to go find.
Well, I'll tell you.
I know they need it. I took a tour of the facility.
There's no doubt.
There's no questions.
There's no doubt that staff needs it, that the Public Works compound has been put off for years and years.
But I don't know.
But I'll tell you, there's gonna be, as we open our budget deliberations, there's gonna be a host of people coming to that diocese right there, saying they need, they need, they need. That would include some of our big priorities, which are the schools. They're going to have a big need, getting back to what Buddy was talking about. And we're gonna have a big priority call here, and I hate to give up all of our decision money on any project. And I know that from the budget deliberations that we had, that we were close to our peak in financing. Not saying we're there, but we're close. So it's just something to think about hard as a council in the coming weeks while Randy develops those options.
Well, and this at least gives us the option, like Buddy said, to decide how much you want to make as a down payment, and how much you want to go into debt for and so on.
Okay.
Be glad to do that. Bob, can you take that slideshow back to the second slide?
Go on.
Can you go one more back? Yeah, I'm sorry, go another one.
Who are you looking?
Looking for the one, well, you can see it in this one. First, I just want to say to the council, thank you for your deliberations on this, and we will be glad to bring something back. And I just wanted to point out something to you. And if you look at the interior of that roof, and all that sky you can see behind it?
It's through the roof.
It's through the roof. And I kid you not, there are beams, with support beams within that building, that you can shake with your hand, and they will shake with you. And I'm very concerned about our people. I'm also concerned about our equipment, but we can replace the equipment, but we can't replace people. We need to do something.
What would be the timeframe, Randy? You know, if council approved this in the next two months or so, what would be the timeframe for having a new Phase One Public Works facility to replace something like this here? How long would it take, I guess?
Good for Mr. Beach. How long would it take to replace that building if we were to start right now?
I think sixty-nine days.
And the proposed improvement, you never get to that slide, right?
Right.
Is that in the presentation for the public?
The one that showed the building with the doors on the front, that was in the package, but it may not have been.
That's not in the presentation.
That's what the full Phase One looks like, exterior. And Phase One, Part One, is that building without the doors at a portion, 100 if it's 150.
And a concrete building.
And again, I don't think there's any question at all, we need to do the project. I think we just need to look at how we want to pay for it.
Any other discussion on that? Okay. Close that item out, and go to comments of the city manager.
Thanks, sir. I just have two. One is to thank again the Lions Club for their $1,500 donation to Parks and Recreation to assist with our soccer program. And also, we've talked about this before, but we're coming to the end. And for those persons who pre-ordered the Pecosin license plate, you can actually expect to see it in the mail by the end of this month. And what's that? And now Graham's got an update.
Mine today.
They're in the mail boxes today.
I got mine today.
You got mine today, also. How about that? And now that those people are getting them, the persons that didn't pre-order, Graham, when will they be able to come to your office?
City yelling from the back room. We found out they came in the mail today, which was fantastic news. The ones that have not been pre-ordered, that will be available at the DMV Select here in Pecosin. We don't have an update on that yet. We haven't got our inventory. But if anyone is interested in a plate for their vehicle that they did not pre-order, they can call the commissioner's office. They can give us their name and number. We will call them when we have our inventory. And so it's exciting. We have them on my wife's car tonight. Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you. That's all, sir.
Okay. Councilman Southall?
Yeah, a couple of things. First, congratulations to Gene and Kerry. And the other thing is, we need to be careful not to forget this project we just discussed, because it is something that really needs to be done. And as soon as we can get our feet on the ground, how we can pay for it, or the best way to pay for it, we need to do that. And so I heard a few minutes ago, this has come up several times before, and that was before Bud. But we can't continue to kick that can down the road. That needs to stop. One other thing, I went to church Sunday, and they had some comments about praying for our city. And I think that's. And I think that's something we all ought to do. These are hard times. People in Japan are having a really hard time now. And our city can use it, and I wish Gordon the best and I'll pray for Gordon's success as a delegate. And again, congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Bud. Theresa?
Thanks. I also wanted to congratulate Delegate Helsel, you mayor and Mr. Vice Mayor. I wanted to also mention the Pecosin High School Symphonic Band scored Superior in the recent festival, and they were named as a Virginia Honor Band for the third year in a row, which is akin to a state championship for them. So, it was, that was a very impressive achievement and congratulations to Doug Spruill for leading them. I wanted to thank Senator Miller for coming earlier and speaking to us, as well as the other people who've spoken to us. And I did want to encourage volunteers to consider volunteering as an advocate for CASA because it is a very worthwhile program that has definite results. So, thank you for that.
Thanks. I had to get the other side of the table first because I used to sit over there, so. Now Buddy?
Just, I would like to personally thank Senator Miller, I'm sorry that he left, but for all the hard work he did in pushing his bill through so that we have the flexibility of taxing our unimproved land at a different rate than the improved land. He did a great job and citizens of Pecosin are very lucky to have him in the Senate. And now we're very fortunate to have Gordon up there in the House of Delegates. Just want to thank him personally for that.
Well, Jerry? Congratulations, Mayor Hunt. And I thought Gordon was going to be here, but if he's listening, he'll definitely be missed by the city. But we're very glad that you'll be representing us in Richmond. And I really enjoyed working with him, and I hope to continue to while he's in Richmond. And may God continue to bless him and watch over him in Richmond. And he definitely will be missed. And I appreciate the support for Vice Mayor. That's all.
Okay. Frank?
Yeah, I was glad to hear John Miller talk about $3 million going for workforce development. That's probably on the local side of their monies issues because the federal side, they're facing either 16%, 20% or a complete loss of money from the federal government. We're still out. So, it's a very important thing, along with the workforce development. And I can't remember what STEP stands for. Do you recall, Buddy? They're like little offices that people can come to and fill out, like get on a computer and do some resumes and stuff like that. There's a lot of the Newport news, Hampton has a, has a bunch, there's some in Yorktown, Williamsburg. And we have a person who just came to the library who worked in one of the other cities. And she encouraged Mrs. Ty to set up a site here. And I don't have the information exactly when it's coming to our library here in town, but it'd be useful for a lot of, you know, if we have unemployed citizens or whatever or students that are looking for jobs or doing, trying to do some resumes to come into the library and work on that. And I had to get what STEP stands for.
I see Randy writing it down, so hopefully.
I cannot remember what, you know, they have more acronyms than.
It's all volunteer, but they, the workforce development people will supply you with the computers and the training that you need.
Great.
It's a great program.
One other quick thing, Councilman Krieger brought up the library. I got that advertisement about you could download books, so I went to that site and tried it, and you can, and it works. And that's a really good, really good thing, I think, that Ms. Ty just added for the community.
Yep. Anything else? Okay. And I agree with Carrie on the library. In fact, with this other addition, how about if Ms. Ty comes and explains the program where she's added eBooks to the Pecosin Library? They always could use some time at the diocese. Again, I appreciate everything from council and I congratulate you as well, Carrie, as being the Vice Mayor, and I appreciate that. Buddy, enough cannot be said about what you took. Senator Miller couldn't have done that alone. That was an idea crafted here in local chambers. And Randy, the thing about taxing and giving us another tool to tax housing and land separately, something that we can't take full advantage of right out of the bat, but something that we can certainly study and have that tool available to us. Few appreciations here. We had a retirement, we talked about having an appointment to the school board. That's not going to happen tonight, but somebody had to leave to make that vacancy. I'd like to thank publicly, publicly Mark Bellamy for spending that time and contributions. We're going to miss him. He's doing that probably for professional reasons, as, as well, he served on the governor's school board. So, he was a great asset to us and we're going to lose him. Want to thank the Lions Club for the donation to Parks and Rec. I also want to thank Chief Bowen, Corporal Johnson, Detective Turner, and as well, a high school department head, Scott LaRue, for bringing the Pecosin Police in to discuss drinking and driving. That's the type of, of interface that we need and appreciate all of those people participating in that. For the rumor mill that's out there, you know, there is a discussion about having Wendy's coming into town. It's a discussion at this point, it's before the Architectural Review Board. Like to always kind of ground rumors that is going on. Concerns, let me discuss briefly some concerns that we have for the six of us left and then maybe the way ahead. We all received a report today that city, that property assessments across the state had dropped dramatically. And now we're seeing the run of the banks closing on foreclosed property, which will probably impact property assessments yet again. Right now, we're looking at what is advertised to be an approximately 12% reduction in property values in the city. That's the budget challenge that we are up against. With a 12% drop, that means that there will be, need to be some type of equalization of the rate. What council can do is we can control spending. We cannot regulate the real estate markets, nor do we try to do that. The one thing that council can do is control spending. To that end, you should know the city of Pecosin is spending at levels approximately of those of 2006. So, have we cut spending from 2010 back? Yes, we have. The majority of that has been paid for by employees foregoing raises, retirements, some cut in, some minor cuts, but no cuts in delivery of services. That's due to a very good city staff that we have working here. What you can count on from my leadership as mayor is that we will continue to protect those employees. Because despite those cuts, everything that we delivered before, we are delivering today. As well, I'd like to see us do something, when I keep saying somebody's going to come to that diocese and say, here's another challenge, I'd like to see us do something for the employees similar to what we did last year. Maybe not the full amount, but something similar. But the first thing is an understanding. And the understanding is that, again, we can't control the real estate market, but we can control spending here. So, that's what we're focusing to do. And I think, do we need to amend the agenda at all here for the oaths of office, or can we just handle that outside?
I think we just handle it.
Okay. So, I don't have anything else? Anybody else have something?
One comment, I would like to thank, to add my thanks also to Buddy for his work on the work that Senator Miller did for the city. We have that tool now, we haven't used it, but we have it available to us. And Buddy did well thanking Senator Miller for that. But I do know he spent a lot of his own time and effort driving up to Richmond to support that. And so, Buddy, we do appreciate that.
Randy did all the driving to Richmond. Randy put in a lot of, lot of time and we owe him.
I have to say, if I could, if you don't mind, I've appeared before General Assembly committees numerous times in my life, usually protesting something. This was asking for something. But I fielded more questions than I think I have cumulatively ever fielded in all the years of being on a General Assembly in the House. But the great thing about that was as I walked up to the, to the podium, Delegate Peace first said, it's nice to see you again, Mr. Willock, because I work with him. But his second question was, what does, what does the mayor think of, is the mayor with you on this? So, they were already thinking about the soon-to-be Delegate Helsel, and that was real nice.
And thank you, Randy.
And finally, I would like to extend a great congratulations to Delegate Helsel. A great win for the 91st District, and that includes Pecosin, but is not limited to Pecosin. But it's a great win. I really feel like the citizens of Hampton and York County will love him in time. And last but not least, I appreciate my family coming here tonight. They're sitting in the audience and appreciate their time on both sides of the aisle, even the late one. But with that said.
Will you take a motion to adjourn? I think you should do the oath of office now. You're here, your family's here, and I think you do not need to do amendment to the agenda to take care of that matter.
Okay. Thank you. Very good.
If you will join me at the voting. I'm going to do the mayor first, it's quite an honor to give the oath to you two gentlemen. I look forward to working with you. If you raise your right hand and repeat after me and say your name. I.
I, Gene Hunt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the State of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As mayor of the City of Pecosin, Virginia.
As mayor of the Pecosin, City of Pecosin, Virginia.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thanks.
Repeat after me. I.
I, Carrie Lawson-Freeman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the State of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As Vice Mayor of the City of Pecosin.
As House Mayor of the City of Pecosin.
Virginia.
Virginia.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, with all that said, how the motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I don't think we'll have any argument about that.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.